January 3, 2022, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers for the regular meeting of the city council officially called the meeting to order and ask Val to conduct the roll call, please.
Before, here Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item C, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Move forward. Move forward with item D, Approval of the Agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow, council discussion if any, hearing none, all in favor?
2020-21 Regular Minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carries. Item F is guest councilperson for the month of January is at the invitation of Councilman Tim Kangas, we have joining us David Kelling.
Good evening.
Thank you. Do you have any words, Tim?
Just known Dave for a long time with both Cedar Falls transplants to Waverly. I think he moved here before I did, but.
I've been here about 20 years.
Yeah, so about 17, so a few years longer, but he and I watched a number of baseball games together when we were in school from the bench. He has a home inspection business in town and.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That pretty much sums it up.
All right. Wonderful. Well, you know the rules of engagement, can join in on the conversation and debate. Just don't have a vote and no executive sessions, so. Moving forward with section G, Community Highlight, we're joined this evening by five of the dance team athletes that won the 2021 State Champion Class III Novelty. Coach Jerry Wade Booth is with us, she can come up and kind of give an introduction of what it's all about, how they got to where they're at and go through the roster.
Thanks for having us. We competed at the state competition on December 2nd and 3rd. We competed with three routines, Palm, Hip-Hop, and Novelty. This is the first year we've ever brought three routines to our state competition. We won the state championship for Novelty. It was the, not our first state championship, only our second, but the first time in this category, so it was very exciting and unexpected. The girls start preparing for this last May and practice all through summer and fall getting ready for it, at the same time competing at home events, so it's a lot of work for them. We only have about half of our team here. A lot of them are in studio dance or other activities or have jobs, so that's who we have with us tonight. We'll continue our season through March and we'll have a show on February 13th that sort of culminates and we'll review all of our routines. Everyone's invited to come. We'll have some of our friends from Cedar Falls and Waterloo come and perform as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments by the council?
I didn't think they were going to dance for us.
They don't look prepared for that. I'll let you introduce. You can go through the whole roster or you can just introduce who's here with us.
I'll introduce you here. We'll start with Gracie May. She is, Gracie May Miller is a junior on the team. Ellie Booth is a junior on the team. Amelia Sampson is our only freshman on the team. Michaela Zeskey is a senior and Brooke Willis is a senior. We're missing Lauren Marsh, who's a senior, and Laney Hermeyer, who is a sophomore. And then we have three team managers. We have almost as many team managers as we do team members, but we have a lot of stuff to carry around. So we have Brittany Raymer is a team manager, Ally Seagars, and Raya Olds, and then of course, our beloved assistant coach Hannah Tucker.
Excellent, excellent. We're breaking course of our normal rendition of bringing everybody through with handshakes and everything, just to take our extra precautions with students going back to school and stuff, so we can give them a warm round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work and hopefully see you again next year.
Fingers crossed.
That's right. Good deal. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move into section H, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. Yeah, you don't need to stay if you don't want to.
Well, it's gonna be a good one.
That's right. Hopefully short, 8 o'clock is the goal, right, Rob?
Right.
We're gonna try to limit our comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer for public comments this evening. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? Seeing nobody rise to the occasion, we'll move forward to the Consent Calendar in Section I. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item number one, set the public hearing date for February 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review the Cedar Lane Reconstruction Project Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Cost. Item two is set the public hearing date for February 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review the Downtown Alley Reconstruction 22 Project Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Cost. Item three is set the public hearing date for February 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review the WELL 5 Reconfiguration 2022 Project Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Cost. Item four is purchase of a Big Gym Municipal Park Roller from Daike Implement of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase price of $7,000 for the Parks Division Athletic Fields Maintenance of Leisure Services. Item five is a pay request from Holland Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ball Field 2019 Cedar River Park for the amount of $3,733.50. Item six is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WELL 5 Reconfiguration 2022 for the amount of $8,602.45. Item seven is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $51,022.19. Item eight is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the SRF State Revolving Funds Sponsored Project for the amount of $447.36. Item nine is a pay request from Minerva Construction Incorporated for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of $55,377.27. Item 10 is a Class C Liquor License for Big Ben Porthouse. Item 11 is a Class B Native Wine Permit for T Nursery. And item 12 is the Cash Dispersment for November of 2021. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor. Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bowfer, council discussion if any?
I just have two comments. First one, James isn't here, but I'm very glad to see the public hearing being set for the alley on the south side of the 100 block on the west side of the river. I bug that, I bug James about that every couple of months. That hasn't been done yet, so I'm glad to see that's moving forward. And secondly, when we're buying a piece of equipment with the intriguing name of a Big Gym Municipal Park Roller, Garrett would really love to see a picture.
All right, sorry, I'll have a picture for you.
That's all right.
I'll get one sent to you, though.
I did take it upon myself to search that out and it's a lawn roller beefed up with hydraulic lift to be able to tow it down the road and get it to the next location. It's big and it's gym.
Big gym, so it must be.
Yeah, yep. So I think it should be James, honestly, just to give it stature, you know. Any further comments of value? Hearing none? My, I have just myself. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries. Moving forward with regular business, section J. Item number one is Resolution 22-01, a resolution designated in the Bremer County Independent Waverly Democrat as the official legal newspaper of the city of Waverly for the year 2022. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 2201 designated in Bremer County Independent Waverly Democrat as the official legal newspaper of the city for the year 2022.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen, council discussion if any?
Cities are required by law to advertise a lot, so I guess we can vote this down, but if it's going to come back to us, we legally have to advertise it, so.
That would be accurate, so. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Val.
Before.
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, Resolution 22-01 is approved. Item two is Resolution 22-02, a resolution setting season pass prices and fees for the golf course for 2022. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 2202, approving setting season pass prices and fees for the golf course for 2022.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bowfer, council discussion?
I'll just say it's still a bargain.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Val.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, Resolution 22-02 is approved. Item three is Resolution 22-03, a resolution approving the dissolution of the Ball Diamond Task Force. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 21-03, approving the dissolution of the Ball Diamond Task Force.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Bowfer.
It's 2203.
I say.
He said 21.
Did I say oh?
It's all right. Takes some getting used to.
So motion by Bergen, second by Bowfer on that. Just to bring this, make this real clear and kind of stepping away, Mayor Soash has joined us this evening. He has a couple words as he approaches. I just want to explain that this doesn't remove Mr. Langer from his volunteer capacity of assisting Leisure Services and the city with the fundraising efforts that he's been instrumental in thus far, so that would continue that relationship with the city on that matter. I'm offering, since it's on the agenda and no public comment for items on the agenda, I'm going to allow Mr. Soash to share some words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just think that over the past many months, that this group of people that happened to fall into my jurisdiction when I was mayor, they were appointed back on the 15th of July of 2019. Need some public recognition. Mayor mentioned Jeremy Langer, who ended up as the chair of that task force, Josh Peterson, Tina Miller, Jennifer Nuss, Charlie Hyer, Chuck Britton, and Kevin Miller were the members of that task force. And Tina has two handicapped boys that have already enjoyed the Miracle Field, the all-inclusive field that was part of that. I would be remiss not to mention Ann Rothie was the council liaison for a while and then Mr. Snyder, Councilman Snyder, joined in January of 2021, or 2020, I'm sorry, and without Garrett's leadership and Mr. Bronner's, but in just over two years, that piece of ground across from the soccer complex on Cedar River Parkway has taken shape. And it's to the leadership of this committee, the fundraising that's gone into it, the youth of Waverly have waited since late 1990s, early 2000s for a project such as this. I was visiting with a gentleman last week that plays adult softball. He happens to be from New Hampton and he says, I hope that Waverly does not forget about adult softball, which I think is in the plans, whether it is, remains at Memorial Park or moves to a different location, but I would assure whoever's in charge, hopefully will appoint a group to work with the consultants that are working on Memorial Park Reconfiguration reuse. But the other thing is, when I went to the open house and was held earlier in the fall, what a, what a complex. I think Waverly will be able to host tournaments of all kinds and it'll be a great feeling to see those parking lots full of cars at some point in time, but I just thought it was, wasn't trying to pat my back by any means, but that it was time that that group be acknowledged for their service and hope each and every one of them and not only the task force, but I've done it a lot of times while I was in business, that when I drove by a project, I could say I had a hand in that. And I hope each and every one that's on the task force and the members of the council can drive by and say, we had a hand in that and it's a, it's a great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Those comments are well warranted, in my opinion, so.
I would hope we, I know we do with people that have served on regular year with the commission, we give certificates and recognition and appreciation for their service.
Absolutely.
I would hope we have something to commemorate their service as well. I agree. Mayor Soash didn't want to pat his own back, but I think he deserves a little bit more patting on the back for helping, helping that get that set up. But certainly Jeremy and the commission members did a remarkable job in moving forward with that project when the other one stalled out after several years. It's definitely moved very fast and is going to be much appreciated for years to come.
Yeah, absolutely. We will be doing that. We just have to move through this item on the agenda to get to that point, so technically it doesn't take a resolution. It's already dissolved by, you know, our city ordinances that task forces dissolve at the end of the year if they're not renewed. So this would basically be if somebody wanted to change the motion to keep it in place, it would be renewing it. It's the opinion, I think I reached out to Ann and Matthew about the purpose of dissolving it, you know, they haven't had a meeting. Leisure Services has kind of taken that over in the aspect of where it really belongs now. I don't think there's any hard feelings by anybody on the task force about that, that they'll still be referenced if need be unofficially, but this seems to be the right way to go, so. Anything further?
That's why I say, you know, big projects are tough and a big project like this, that going into it there, there was some rift amongst the community and this project was going to happen and it happened and the community came together and that's a wonderful thing. And it took a team of people to get that smooth.
Right. Yep.
So hats off to everybody. It's a good deal.
All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Val.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, Resolution 22-03 is approved. Item number four is approval of the mayoral appointments. I'll just read it here, approval of the following appointment. Chief Rich Purcell is reappointed to the Bremer County E911 Service Board for a term ending January of 2023. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the mayoral appointment.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Rothie, council discussion if any? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carries. Item number five is approval of the mayor pro tem. Approve the appointment of Tim Kangas as mayor pro tem for this next year. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of mayor pro tem of King Kangas. Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Schneider, council discussion if any? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carries. Item number six is approval of council liaisons to the boards and commissions. We're going to have to have a discussion. The only thing on here that would be changed is public safety board with the voting member there. Ms. Bowfer cannot make those meetings in the morning with her full-time obligations. I know Julie Myers has articulated that she could step in, in that seat, just doing a tally if that were to be done. It puts warden, puts Mr. Bergen at three, it would put Ms. Myers, Ms. Myers at four, Mr. Drinkow at three, Ms. Bowfer at two, Mr. Kangas at three, Mr. Schneider at two, and Ms. Rothie, or Ms. Rothie at two as well. I did do some research on that particular one and there's two ways that we can do this. We can move forward with appointing Julie to that, that board. In the past, they've also appointed an alternate and in most cases, looking back, it's been several years since that's been done, the mayor has been appointed as the alternate so that business can be conducted. If they're looking like they're not going to have a quorum, at least they can reach out and say, hey, and it's official that that person's vote would count. The other option is, is to lessen the burden on Ms. Myers with four seats. You, there have been cases where the mayor was appointed and an alternate was a council member. I'll leave it up for your discussion. I'm fine doing whatever the council wants or just leaving it just Julie.
I think I talked to Julie about it. She thought it would fit in with her schedule. The meetings are usually very brief unless it's budget time or something and I don't think she felt like it was, I can't speak for her, but she told me it wasn't going to be a burden, so I would favor allowing her to do it if she.
And that's fine. Do we want to entertain having an alternate in case Mr. Drinkow or Myers weren't able to attend as the backup plan? It's not very frequent that we've run into not having a quorum.
No, I mean, I've been on the board since I was first elected, so that was, what, 2016? And we've never actually had a meeting where we did not have a quorum, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen in the future. I think that if that is permitted, I don't see a reason not to do that since it's kind of unfair to the rest of the members if we don't, we're not able to have a quorum and we can't conduct a meeting that month. I would like to be able to have a, a way to work around that if that actually happens. And I know you've attended several of the meetings also, so, you know, it is not, if there's nothing, I guess what I'm trying to say is if there's nothing that prohibits us doing that, I certainly have no objection to it. I'm going to look at our city attorney.
I didn't really look at the ability to. I didn't really look at the ability to do that, but I think as long as the board accepts them as representative of the city.
Right.
I would think having an alternate since this is a unique position in the fact that it's a voting member, so it does entail making a quorum versus
Right.
just simply being a liaison, as many of these are.
Right.
It would be probably wise to have that option.
And it would be at the mercy.
I think having an alternate would be just very wise.
And that's strictly at the mercy of Mr. Drinkow and Ms. Myers to reach out to me, say, "Hey, I can't be there, you know, attend." So it doesn't supersede their, if we're all three of us there, it's their meeting, you know. I sit back and observe. So usually it's because I'm going to the supervisor's meeting right afterwards, so.
So, let's see. Well, sorry.
So do we need to change the language so that every time, then the mayor's the alternate? Or are we doing this just so that you can serve as alternate for this term, for this two years?
It's kind of ebbed and flowed. Certain mayors or administrations have had it, and others haven't. So it's kind of gone, you know, either way. So I think it's just kind of at the mercy of the council's opinion of whether it should be that way or not, with the suggestion from the mayor. Of course, it's, you know, approved that way. Pete's here.
Oh, maybe that's Julie.
Do you want to get it, Val? It's not a local number, so it could be.
Well, I think probably rather than having, are you suggesting, if I understand what you're suggesting, it would be that the mayor, whoever that individual would be, would be a permanent standby member for that board. I'm not, I guess that would be possible.
But I think I would change the ordinance.
I would think just for the year.
Right.
We could have a permanent alternate, though, right? I think what happens is the board has, the city gets two spots on the board, two voting members.
Right.
I don't know that they would probably care if you had the same two each time, so I think alternate really makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, I certainly don't have a problem with that. And occasionally, you know, there are three members of the board of supervisors, two of which are official members of the board, and occasionally, one of those official members can't make it, and the third person who is not an official member shows up at the meeting, you know, because of that. So they always have two people from the county that are there. So I don't see a problem with having us designate an alternate that would be good for at least the two years until we reassign people.
I think it makes sense. I think it's, the intent is to have two votes.
Right.
Exactly. Somebody's hard warranty insured.
So we're looking for somebody to make a motion.
Well, it's basically just, in the council packet, the list stays the same, except for the Public Safety Board. Ms. Bowfer is removed from that responsibility. Ms. Myers is added to it, and the position of an alternate with the mayor is put in that position. And it could end up being a standing thing, that you could put the mayor in that, and then just going forward, you know, two years from now, whoever's mayor, that, you know, the council wants to reconsider and to say that that's kind of the standing thing, then it is. They can always remove it again if they don't feel that it's necessary. So that's what my list will be that I submit. So that's the changes to it, is that swap between Heather and Julie, and then adding the alternate. The others will stay the same. Any further discussion, understanding that? So now we'll take a motion, since that's been put there.
I'll make a motion to approve the council liaisons with the change of Public Safety Board, of Rod Drenkow remaining, Julie Myers being the second voting member, and Mayor Hoffman as the alternate.
Second?
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving forward with Section K, Reports from Boards and Commissions. Item one is a Board of Adjustments Minutes of September 13th, 2021. Item two is Economic Development Commission Minutes of October 12th of 2021. Item three is Historic Preservation Commission Minutes of October 25th, 2021. Item four is the Golf Commission Minutes of November 9th, 2021. Item five is the Human Equity and Diversity Commission Minutes of November 9th, 2021. And item six is the Bremer Waverly Law Board Minutes of December 13th of 2021, received into the record. Moving to Section L, Staff Updates. Mike, Garrett, anybody? All right. Moving forward to Section M, City Council Comments. We'll start with Mr. Bergen, as usual.
So my New Year's resolution this year was, if I wanted to do something, and I couldn't get any of my family or friends to go along with me, to just do it and have fun, no matter what. On a related note, on January 1st, I went kayaking, thanks to the services of Crawdaddy Outfitters in Town. Every year, they offer kayaking on one of the local rivers on New Year's Day. I believe there were about 20 of us out there. I believe the temperature was about four degrees, so there were some hearty souls. And I just have to say, we are very lucky as a town to have Crawdaddy Outfitters in town. They're a great group to have in town. They do a great service to the community. They bring a lot of business in. They run a great shop, so I just kind of wanted to thank Crawdaddy for the services they provide, and encourage anyone else to put that on their calendar for next year if they are so inclined. And, as usual, I will be at the Beach House, if anyone would like to join me for a beer, to discuss city business.
Thank you. Was it your waiters that were standing up frozen solids?
No, no, I was there and helping people. All you have to bring is, like, warm weather. They provide the kayaks, the life vests, the paddles, even the hot cocoa afterwards.
Nice. Good deal. Thank you. Ms. Bowfer?
No comments tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Rothie?
Well, on New Year's Day, I dragged my Christmas tree to the curb so that the Public Works employees could come pick it up, and it vanished like a Christmas miracle today. So I appreciate that service. That's all I've got.
That's good. Mr. Schneider?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Drinkow?
I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. Kellin, it's a short meeting.
I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Kangas?
I would just note that the Bremer County Historical Society is doing some fundraising to help do some restoration of the building. They're having some structural rehabilitation that they need have done for that building, and I would encourage the public to help out.
All right. Thank you. The only comment that I have this evening is, many of you probably heard on Kayway or through other sources, that former Mayor Keith Schultz passed away on Tuesday, December 28th, 2021, in his home up in Michigan. He was our 45th mayor, serving two terms from 1990 to 1993. He led the city with a good handful of projects, just like Mayor Soash had mentioned. Cedar River Park will go down on his back as far as an accomplishment. But a couple of them that were noted in some newspaper articles that I found back in that time was the park at Kings Kingdom. This building that we're in here fell under that term, was constructed. And then also the industrial park on Fourth Street Southwest, where the Waverly Plastics was the first occupant there. So there's a few things that dealt with commerce in the city, city infrastructure, and then also, you know, our leisure services fall back to that time period. So with that, our thoughts are with the family. And with that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Motion by Schneider, second by Kangas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.